...our January 5th, 2016 work session. And if you would please silence or shut off your cell phone and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, just and just as well.
Traditions or deletions to the agenda this time?
I have no changes.
No changes. There being no changes. Our very first item is elect our 2016 Board Chair. With that being said, this is a new year, happy new year to everybody, and I hope it's a very productive year. So, we need to elect the Chair, and then after that, we will elect a Vice Chair.
Do you want to make a motion to elect Commissioner Ken Kessner as Chair for 2000, calendar year 2016?
I will second the motion. Motion has been made and seconded to elect Commissioner Kessner as Chair for 2016. Any further discussion?
I'll make up the responsibility of the Chair is basically just to run the meetings and to make sure that there's an agenda to be had.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. At this time, I'll pass the gavel down to Chair Kessner.
And on the Vice Chair, I'll make the motion that we elect Commissioner Dan Shown as Vice Chair.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can do it, Jerry.
Yep.
The first thing is a time item at 9:30, which we have substantial amount of time to get there. And then...
I'd suggest that we have our Treasurer here. She has a couple things on, and then we go get her in and out quickly.
And that would be the Budget Committee Member of Recommendation.
Budget Resolution. I think that's only two of them.
Yes. So, we have a vacancy on our Budget Committee during our meetings last year, can't quite fill it in time before our end of April meetings. We did run some ads in both the newspaper and online, and stuff is in the paper in the month of December, and then the Denver month of December. We did have one interested individual from the Paisley area, throw his name in the hat, and that's Shaylan Shuffield. You are already familiar with him, I think he plays a role in our Planning Commission. And so, it's nice when someone from the community, who's already active, and has a foot in the door here at the county, wants to do more for us. So, I'd like to recommend that we appoint Shaylan Shuffield to the Lake County Budget Committee. It's a three-year term, so it would begin December of 2018, starting a little late in the term.
Well, Ann, I think your description of where he's from is somewhat accurate. The Summer Lake area is actually where he's going to be building a new home, but I always say that because we try, as we all know here, to spread, you know, the three positions out throughout the county, and where you can't make people apply, you know, that's as far north as we've been able to get someone that's interested in serving the hat.
It's been a few years we've had people from North Lake, but it has been a few years.
Yep.
Darwin?
His address was just a Paisley address right now.
Yeah. You have a kind of motion?
No.
The other topic I have for you today is a resolution for the Special Transportation Grant funding that Denise will be receiving. It is specific purpose in this grant that it is for capital expenditures and capital expenditures only. So, with that qualification, we're allowed to make this change to the budget just through the resolution process. So, Resolution Number 2015-09, in the matter of unanticipated revenue increases Special Transportation capital expenditures by $110,000. I think you'll hear more about that today, so this is just the budget piece of it, the rest, that information from there.
Denise is our Special Transportation Fund, and here we'll let it wait.
Correct. It has to do with...
Great. Thanks, Ann. Yeah.
Thank you.
And then, let's go to the 2016 Liaison on Consideration.
Mr. Chair, we might get Darwin out here also, if you have a planning commission. Is that the only thing you have?
I have Darwin out.
Yeah, come on, Darwin.
Okay.
I'm not trying to steer the median from down here.
I had other things on my mind this morning, I need to focus here.
I know you didn't quite do it.
So, just as a brief summary of this, is the Planning Commission back in November had twelve applicants for two vacant positions. They filled one of those, and what they had were open, really desiring to fill it by what's in our bylaws, to try to get a balance of the areas represented in the county, and they kind of desired that we could get somebody out on the west side on the Planning Commission. Soon after that, Wes Davies submitted a letter of interest and introduction before you, and then we pulled the, I pulled the Planning Commission and got their approval to for recommendation of Wes Davies. Wes is fairly new to the community, but he's, you know, southeast orient, born and raised in Hart County, you know, graduate from, I believe, Crane College, and he's a graduate of whatever branch, BYU. So, he's a young...
That's a good school.
Yep, great, great school, and a great young man, so he's definitely, he's running the McFarlane Ranch, so he's a good balance to the Planning Commission. So, we decided to have him start, same time as Jim was this January 19th. That's kind of my...
Yeah, looks good.
I have no question.
He would have loved to have been here, he's moved the cattle, though, so...
And his father is Stacy Lawrence Springs.
And Stacy was in Burnt, Stacy's been on the Planning Commission for at least a decade, probably, in the cattle, so he can lean on his cattle a little bit, too.
Relax, Darwin.
All right. Thanks, Darwin.
So, anything to look?
You do whatever you want, man.
Let's move to the wolf depredation conversation.
Okay, we can go right there. The Wolf Depredation Committee, we made a decision here, I believe, two meetings ago to put this together. I've been working with Stockroers, Joe Will Graham, the President of Stockroers. He has two names to bring forward for us to appoint, and that was our recommendation, have them give us two names. Those two people, and I apologize, it's not in the packet, those two names are John Taylor... Oh, it's on there? Thank you, thank you Denise, John Taylor and Tom Mularkey.
Denise didn't show you, that's how you...
Oh, yeah, but I know she won't, I broke it. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Shown. I stand corrected.
Thank you Denise for making this available for me to show to Commissioner Mularkey.
Oh, you just can't have any thunder here, though. So anyways, the recommendation is for John Taylor and Tom Mularkey, and we can appoint these tomorrow. And then, on the conservation side, which is a requirement, we have three applications. Those are in your packet. We have Doug Troutman, we have Bill Granzi, and Jay Johansson, Johansson? And I think he goes by J. Joe?
J.
J. Jacob is his name. Reading through these, we point two out of the three, and going entirely by the information that was put on the application is for me, tomorrow I will recommend, I will be recommending, unless you guys see something different, I'll be recommending the two that has put the most information down and the most knowledge on wolf predation and conservation, and reviewing those, we obviously can probably see the two that I'm talking about, entirely by their application, the information that's put on there.
For the recommendation aspect, I've got my comment for the committee, and then if you could elaborate on the purpose of the wolf committee, depredation committee?
The purpose of the wolf depredation committee is there's a grant process out there to build, to leverage dollars. The Oregon Department of Agriculture leveraged dollars whenever there is in predation by wolves, and there's also dollars that you can leverage to discourage wolves from coming around with cattle. So this, by organizing this depredation committee, gives us an opportunity to apply for the dollars, have the dollars available for our ranching community to get compensation for loss of animals, which is inclusive of cows, horses, stock dogs, sheep, on and on. There's also dollars to help deter wolves from coming onto your range land or your farm. Range land's going to be a whole nother challenge, but it's also, and there is dollars, ninety percent, or ninety percent through the grant for the organization of this committee, ten percent has to be paid by the county of that, to leverage that ninety percent, and I'm working with our Treasurer to find out exactly if that nine, or that ten percent the county has to put in, they can be in kind of my time and other time that we put in, I believe it can. So, working with our Treasurer or Budget Officer to make sure through budget time, if we need to put this into our budget, we'll be there to apply for a grant. There's a deadline of February, early February, middle of February for this year, so I'm trying to get things rolling on that right away, so...
On the applicants, the ones so mentioned, as the ones that we actually received, I just need to make note that I had a phone message from a gentleman of Northern Lake County, Lee Roby Urban, left a phone message. I tried to get back to him several times to get him follow up, but there's been no connection, so anyway, check for acknowledgement.
I appreciate that, yes. My email back to him did kick back, it didn't get...
And I left phone messages, and... But also, this wolf committee, most people would think it'd be handed through the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, it's not, it's handed through the Oregon Department of Ag. And this statute, before we give any depredation compensation, we had to have this committee, that's Department of Central Committee, as a follower of procedure.
And we will have non-voting representation from the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, which will be Craig Foster, will be, I guess you'd say, ad hoc part of the committee for his expertise and all.
And also for public information, we do have wolves in Lake County. They've been popping up here and there. Right now, we have a wolf over in Fly Area that's keeping kind of latching this way, and we have one up in Silver Lake vicinity, and I suspect we have many more showing up, so this is a preamp to get our committee formed for the inevitable possibility of depredation on the...
Thank you.
And we'll take that tomorrow?
Yep.
Back to OLCC Licker Application, Water and Hope, that's the same Fort Rock. I understand that the ownership of the tavern had changed, so we have a new owner applying for a Licker license.
That is correct. If you check with the Sheriff and other sheriff to see if there were any issues, neither one of them having issues with this person.
All from the Commissioners?
No, I actually ran into Shown last week, I think, and told him we needed to be sure that this was checked by a long-term staff, which he did, so...
I have to ask, considering for Steve, like you drive, how do you run into?
He was parked.
It was Steve's park. It was actually over by the water fountain. And I was going really fast.
It wasn't fast, and it really got off it, as long as it got reversed.
That's right.
So, you walked past where it was parked?
There's a small story about Dan Shown and Graham's feet. He's the only person that has a deer that rear ends him.
I heard last rec, he is in, and he's parked in front of his house, and he had a major wreck parked, and that's a true story.
That's a true story.
We had to have a lot of people in this session.
Poor Dan, happy to be here, Dan.
Let's go now to the 2016 Liaison on Consideration.
Denise, one that you might want to put on there, where you have undermined Climb of Lake, the old cleat tie in Central River, just cross out the Climb of Lake stuff, because it's no longer.
Also, a year ago, Commissioner Shown had swapped the liaison public health and airport boat, still got airport on the boat. Is the Regional Investment Board still alive?
No.
The Regional Investment Board, is that still functioning?
No.
No?
Well, unfortunately, we have too many things, how are the Regional Investment Boards there? But one related to workforce is...
Falls on you?
Yeah.
If you remember right, the one that I was on, Regional Investment Board, through school, I would go, pretty many dollars, you know, it's still the same, I think, mine is in two years, I thought it was this last year, yeah, it's no longer. That was a state fund, maybe it went away. At least on this part.
Also, under Commissioner Shown, Lake County Chamber of Commerce, we stepped aside from that liaison. And then, Sustainable Forest Action, I think that was intended for all three of us as a common. And to undermine the NATO telecommunications technology standard. There's a few things I noted this morning.
Mine you can add, I believe, Regional Solutions, that I do have those last year.
And also undermine, add liaison to wolf testing this time.
It's already on it. See, I don't like...
I'm probably missing some things, but...
We can clear them up in the page class, we got it all.
Yeah, but...
Do you guys want to switch in your end?
I do all that, too.
I'm good for right now, for now, I, unless somebody has desired one to take over all the mining.
Did you have something in mind, Denise?
You're going to assume?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I've actually offered to assemble all of their funds.
Okay, good.
That's not, that's not my job, that's...
Oh, as duties assigned.
I hate that line, I'm like...
Apparently Commissioner Shown's your liaison, because I complimented you and he corrected me. That's the reason why I chimed in on this speed thing with Mr. Kessner, they haven't set the tone.
Yeah, that's right.
I don't, I think my consensus would be fine, Commissioner, if he...
Yeah?
Moving on to the Opportunity Grant, RFQ Plan Purchase, can you elaborate on that for us, Denise?
Of the what? Yes. So, as you know, we purchased our first two vans from Hall for special transportation. Part of your resolution was the $88,000 to purchase those vans with state funds. Those were unanticipated funds, because we have not planned on purchasing four vans, if we don't, we plan on purchasing two. So, that's part of the resolution. This is for our Ladders of Opportunity Grant, we've gone back out, I've worked very closely with our ODOT reps on which RFQ to accept, and agreement has been to go with Shepkey Northwest Sells, it's on in Ameriling. You'll note that it is not the lowest bid, but it is the overall lowest life cost for the program, has been there, but require a lot more maintenance than Ameriling, so per the recommendation with ODOT, those are the vans that I recommend.
I already asked you this question, but you ran this through the Rock side, but you just said plus our legal council.
Correct.
Your recommendation was within the guideline to be...
Correct. For future reference, they want us to always go off the right cost, not lowest bid, so we're always to investigate which one has the lowest life cost.
Any verification with you, Karen? Do you understand?
Yeah.
Basically, we go with low bid, but when the cost for maintenance is exceeding, we can bounce it out and go with another consideration.
That's for federal end sake, I would, according to what I read as well.
We have about seven minutes, Jim.
Sounds good.
We can start late on a time that we cannot start early.
That's right. Kristy's supposed to be sitting in the doctor's, so she's going to try and be here.
Do you want me to go through the discretionary from RFQ? Okay, so the State Legislature has again awarded more money to be put towards special transportation needs. It is strictly a capital and strictly a pool, rather than certain amounts getting designated to each county. So, what this RFQ does, we'll send it out, I do not anticipate any of our providers needing any capital monies, but we do need it, as we are going to have two vehicles parked at the North Lake Annex. We do need to expand the size of the bus shelter that we're planning to build this year. So, we will be doing an application for $15,000 to go into increasing the size of that bus shelter. We already have $25,000 aside from our previous funding.
This is the discretionary funds, Denise?
Correct.
Trying to look here, was that, was that the $110,000 we just tuck in?
That's part of the 110.
Part of the 110, okay, I was trying to make the numbers.
Yeah, we rounded it up a little bit, but $88,000 of it is for the first two vans, the temporary state funds, and then this additional funding.
So, on your brief on this, Denise, just for the record, you have on your last sentence the application, so if you do, but it doesn't say what month?
Oh, I apologize, February.
Okay.
Also, on the cover sheet, you've got RFQ, which is for academies request for qualifications, and on the attached page is RFQ Request for Proposals, lots of time that those two academics are going to change the course of...
And that's all right.
Gentlemen, we'd like to take a five-minute break.
Sure.
If there's anybody that wish coffee or water next to it, if you wish, you can pack it, my drink. Back at nine thirty.[261.14]
We're doing these, well, we need to increase the pace and scale. And that's one of the things we've worked hard to get. These are all things we're not getting dollars for. The price has been considerably higher. But anyway, we gotta increase that pace and scale because you look at Wintering Toolbox Fires and being killed in Berry Point. Maybe talking fifty-five thousand acres gone. You know, just gone. And how do we get ahead of that problem with our thinning? And then on the other side of that, we know we gotta get there. The Forest Service is on board. Collins is on board. We're working to that with the park and the community. They're on board. But then if we do these thinnings too heavy to reduce fires, we have to take the time, we've been working on the present, there's so much, to look at. What's gonna be there in six years, plus years? Are we doing... So we need to go back with all those plots, and we're starting to do that. And starting to do models to see... Because we've also changed the growth models here to reflect our growth rates. They're slower than what the normal Forest Service growth models have for ponderosa pine and white fir and stuff. We've reduced those down because more plot that into what is actually here. So we feel accurate about that. But what are we doing out there? And how do we tweak all this? The middle, the small diameter, the harvest units, the reducing the fire threat, which is a priority. How do we get that all in balance so that everything works together and works well? And I gotta go. We're not there yet, but it's our goal is to get there. And all that is not financed. Now, if we would've got our ruby money, we'd have the finances to work on those things that we are working on right today without dollars to do. And so that's the gist of that part.
That and, I'd like to add, the work that we're doing to raise funds for the Innovation and Learning Center to finish that upper floors, a community center. The LCRI has raised over three hundred thousand dollars, with none of that money coming back to LCRI. And it takes time and effort and energy to, you know, write the grants, meet with the funders. And we're looking at approximately five hundred thousand dollars to finish that upper floor of the Innovation and Learning Center. And I see that as a great contribution to our community, this whole county. A community center that we do not currently have. So it's important work and it benefits everyone in the community and the county.
It'll be a place for many conventions, cultural events. It'll have an elevator. We've got a kitchen in the basement to serve food. There's a lot of pluses that we don't have in that that we'll draw to in addition to the collie side will be in there. They'll have that ability to hold as many conventions and have breakout rooms and use that technology to telecommute.
Workforce development is just, it's endless. It's endless the possibilities that we have, so.
One of the things that, you know, grants just don't do. We try and give a little here and there sometimes, but so many agencies, particularly when you're dealing with agency grants, do not allow administration. So I don't know how they think work gets done. I've never figured that out in my career, but I probably won't ever.
Well, we're not, I see a contradiction with that. I mean, they're getting it done, but you just said you don't see how it can get done.
Well, they don't see how...
No, they don't see it.
I don't see how they think that it can get done with nothing. It takes a lot of work. And it takes, you know, a lot of, you know, local support too. And so we hope that the eight thousand we're asking, we thought in the beginning of the year, even though we had a letter and all that stuff, you know, we could get by because of our reserves. And that reserve had to be used to do the work that we do. So we hope that's not an overinvestment and something we can do. We have a lot of local support. And you just received a check today from a local donor of five thousand dollars. I mean, so people recognize our work, but it does take a lot of that to get it done.
You've come before us in previous years for a donation or funding and questions always, what do we get in return? And you elaborated pretty extensively on that. Economics comes in, economy of a community comes in many different shades of color or grains of sand, as I say. And working with Collins and the Forest and those things are not reversible to logic and go to Congress and so forth. But every little grain of sand adds up to the outcome.
I'd like to also say too that, you know, Brad and I particularly worked on natural gas here. And you talk about economic development, again, those things we don't get fun for. Well, you need a strategy, what happens if that does not occur? How do we reduce the cost of these businesses? And that's helping economic development. We found a nineteen eighty plan done by OIT for downtown geothermal heating district. They are upgrading that forest. And should the natural gas go down, we're gonna be in a position to have an alternative for the governor's funds to move forward on a geothermal effort. You know, so again, when you're doing economic development and not being paid for certain things, but you gotta be prepared for the other alternatives that might happen. And LCRI does that work. And so we will be prepared for that, but...
Any questions?
No, I, it doesn't have anything to do with your request, but you were talking about this, Jim. I'm a little concerned on some of the things you were talking about that we're working at potentially at cross purposes. I have a meeting with, a conference call with Westlook, probably Sarah Biddleman and a couple of other staff on next, I don't know what day it is. It's the fourteenth, the day after FedEx, one of the investors in purchasing fuel from Red Rock will be here on the thirteenth. And we've been talking to them about a pilot specifically to this area because there are concerns with other areas. I've talked to Mike Anderson about it and why Senator Wyden wasn't successful before on the definition and what the material was for vital mass from the East Coast hardwoods to, you know, the pulp up on the Columbia. And so as you're describing all this that you're working on, I'm working on the same thing. And I don't know what kind of message we're giving to Congress as far as our communication. So it's just a little bit of insight.
Well, we, and I've talked to Jeff about that too. And he's leading us, which he should, joking around. And so I said, but we need to coordinate with you. And we need, he's writing a white paper, which sometime after the holidays he'd have done when we were gonna make an appointment to get together because we know we need to be on that same page. I did ask him if I could bring it up to Berkeley that we are gonna be looking to a pilot, you know, for that, and he said, yeah, go ahead and do that.
Well, we, I guess we really do need to visit because Jeff and I have talked quite a bit, you know, when we were out there at Parker Hills, the area there near Coffee Pot Flat that we looked at this past fall or whenever it was. And that was brought up. I was in conversation with a couple of folks there. But, yeah, because Jeff is kinda, we're just getting different messages because Jeff's kinda deferred. He's gonna call this afternoon, he's on his way to Boston, about a lot of this. And I guess Mary's gonna be the one that's down next week, so.
But Jeff did, so you guys need to be talking to each other.
Yeah. That's why I said that was a team.
So we've had a lot of this discussion with you guys. The biggest recipient of a lot of you guys' hard work, whether it's Innovation Learning Center or it might be Red Rock, their investment into contribution to LCRI and funding. Have you received funding? Or have you been for the recipients of these dollars and asked them for funding?
Some of them we have. Some have reasons that they cannot, can't pull a agreement under a private law. Other ones, we did. That was the service fee, the community service fee under ECU. That was their effort to do that. The negotiations with the natural gas, that didn't work under this one for Red Rock. But Jeff's fully, he's, we get partial contracts a lot of times, whether it be obsidian for helping them get local projects to do work on their projects or whatever. They're piecemeal, they're never told yearly something. But we do get piecemeal contracts from the private entities.
Back to the...
Yep, on Red Rock, we're working on that.
Back to the energy bill of two thousand and seven that excludes wild mass, as you know, for federal lands. Aspect of, again, an exception to that from pilot is to show that all geographic areas in the United States are not equal. You touched on that earlier. And in the West where you have so much catastrophic fires, the amount of carbon that's emitted is tremendously more than it would be realized in a protective fashion. I touched on that.
You take ones like, you know, our bigger fires, those hundred-plus thousand acres. We've had a few in the state in past years. In one year, they can exceed all the automobile emissions or carbon emissions. So that, they know to demonstrate that is important. Because that, that's where the dry forest is different than all the rest of the country, you know. And that's all the way from our east side to South Dakota, down to New Mexico, Arizona. I mean, hopefully that type of pilot would impact those ponderosa pine, dry type forests.
Have you had much communication with Senator Berkeley other than calling Congress to see if we're within tomorrow?
We've had, yes. And Amy comes out on all our tours with the stewardship group too. And we even testified against this bill in two thousand and seven. And we've been on, LCRI has been on this case of this definition for a long time. We managed to get some change, but change in the national law is tough. So I even expect some of our expenses, if we get to the pilot stage like we did with wild mass, will we go to DC? Not only testify for Congress, but we could put Forest Service and get that support all the way from the supervisor's office, regional to the national office. If needed, congressional support.
Well, one of the things when we're talking about congressional, is I've been in conversation with the Congressman Wallace's office. Their mindset on this is to go back and re-correct to two thousand and seven every week because they said, the work that's involved in doing pilot is just a slightly smaller amount than doing it national. And there's lots of places on national that want to do this. And, you know, I can't argue with them, they're the experts on that. But I said, the most important part to us is we actually have a supply need and production and jobs and other spin-off benefits here locally. And if we took in Klamath and Lake County instead of just Lake County, but Klamath and Lake County and all the federal lands that are within the county, we can demonstrate where it's a similar type of application, someplace else in the nation. We can demonstrate the benefits of doing this. And the maintaining of that fixed carbon because it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out when you have a hundred thousand acre fire and black sticks left, you've emitted all that fixed carbon. You've lost it all. So no one, no one's winning in that, in that battle, so.
You guys work and actually compile the data and show them.
So we did that for four years, for three months. So we got data, it was tremendous. I mean, you know, the public know the parts of the country have. We've got it here.
Well, somebody has to, you know, have to talk about the dollar. So I might as well be the one to bring that forward. Through budget process, through budget intake for this, guys. We've had that conversation before today. We've met with us individually. We'd like to during the budget process to put our dollars that were on economic development or school and give a part of the contribution there to have a full time split represented here. That's just, we've had this conversation, that's where we're at. I haven't seen where we have other dollars available at this point to get the contribution to you guys. Did talk to you about Title III. I haven't put a lot of time into Title III. I've looked at it a little bit. But unless other two commissioners have, when you're working on the title four, it doesn't, I, somebody has to be allowed to talk to them. I would have to, you're a dollar now.
I did ask Ann if she could take a look and get with you guys if you requested it. And she said she'd be willing to do that. Because I don't know where the those dollars either.
We need to follow up on that with Ann before tomorrow's decision. And likewise, as in regards to Commissioner Mitter's not having a budget, there's always contentious refunds, usually more people than contentious refunds ultimately for unexpected expenses or liabilities. It's also there for unexpected opportunities also. So we need to have that discussion.
Oh, I appreciate you taking some time to discuss that.
One little comment.
Yes.
Aside from funding. On this sheet, oh, it's one of my pet pieces. December fourteenth, third paragraph. Living and working in the county are seventy percent that the land is government-owned. Please don't tie me with what's going on in Congress. It is one of my pet pieces. The government does not own the land. They are minister of the land. The land is owned by the people.
And I bet people in Congress would beg to differ.
Oh, really?
I mean, just a little. All my years with the Forest Service, everybody said, that's Forest Service land. I always said, no, it's Forest Service, a minister of the land. Just a little, a little pet peeve I have all.
You know, making our turn and making our changes, we gotta do it so that we don't wind back up court too. But I think we can justify a few more large blocks and office batteries. I think there's things we can do, but we gotta do it within the partnership of the stewardship group.
And that's true, Jim. I, we all visited with some of the folks from college yesterday. And one of the things that just blows me away is this whole east side screens and the negotiations on twenty-one inch. We go to North Warner's and we look at what's gonna go on out there. We put a lot of work into that, and it's all well and good. But when that is treated, we've got old trees that are gonna fall over and we have nothing there. And we're setting ourselves up to have no forest until we get back to multiple use, sustainably managed forest.
Yep, we recognize that too. And we did get, that's one of the things LCRI's accomplished, and so we don't doubt. We did get removal of twenty-one inch off white fir, which is really gonna happen in Warner's. Where down in the Drews area, that didn't help so much. But it will help as we move into the Warner's. But we need to get over that twenty-one inch rule on ponderosa pine.
Well, the rule was put into place because we didn't have a good handle on old growth and how much we know now. And as individually, collectively, we work with our members of Congress, just like Senator Wyden's east side ponderosa pine plan here a few years back. When asked the question about what we thought, I made the comment, if we're talking about scientifically based, there's nothing scientifically based about this. And we have got to get that message out there. We will maintain the old growth structure that's necessary for all the other uses, but we've gotta go in and manage the resource, so.
No, it's quite the contradiction when I hear we need to manage by the best science. We do have the science, we do have all, ponderosa pine trees. Often the decisions and rules like twenty-one inch rule, I suppose, are not science.
No, they're compromised.
You know, we always get that statement, we need to use the best science. We'll use it.
Best science is always handled before. But yes, I was talking to Collins a while back. And the description is blanket across the landscape, moving all the understory stuff and big as the lullaby. That's not equalized, it's sound. Nature cannot do a blanket homogeneous description across the landscape. It had pockets and different species of both plants and animals need that diversity and not give them other descriptions.
Those are the points.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Thank you, thank you very much.
We have a one block meeting with the ODF champion by Francis Pauls on the subject of Edmund's purchase. So that'd be, I think everything else is pretty much covered. Except for the lights on or executives having something.
We did have at least one partner plus Denise and Ginger here.
You guys have to have a favor of your partner.
Plus.
Plus. Well, she's given us enough, she might have more.
Any partners or favors? Thank you. Steve, I'm Jake. I'm Jake, Jim.
Yes.
Anything to share?
I'm still back with LCRI, I'm sorry. There are many moving parts to what's going on with my work. I have been working, as you probably know, with the Lakeview Community Partnership, the Main Street program. And I have been talking with the city of Paisley about the possibility of using some organizational components of the Main Street program. And I'm gonna be meeting with a couple of folks from there that are interested in knowing more about it. So I'm moving out into the northern area of the county with it. And I'm planning a trip to be up in the north part of the county next week. We've got a Situation Sage Wood grocery store. And Christmas Valley is on the market right now. And so I'm looking at, you know, what is happening with all of that. We have, as you well know, a food desert here in Lake County with only one major grocery store and it's in the southernmost part of the county. So trying to help some of these smaller folks in the more, even more rural areas of the county with what their needs are and how they can survive. Or if they need to move on, how can they, how can they move on and still keep that store in the community? Continuing to work with broadband. And a little bit frustrated because they're having a great conference that I didn't have on my radar. And I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be out of the area during that time. But there are some small things that are happening, small steps that are happening with that. We're awaiting a report from FiberServe in Klamath Falls about how they might be able to help us map out the last vestiges of what needs to be covered in the county. And that would be Valley Falls area and Flushing, Yale area. It's complicated because of our public lands there to try to find areas where we can place equipment. We can never get that happening anyway. So everything is like, pretty much more of the same. It's just continuing to work through slowly the broadband issues, helping communities with organizational structures to help improve their economic viability. There's been sort of what I would say a tea berry shuffle of businesses and owners recently, and that seems to be going. I don't think it's any secret that there is an effort to look at the possibility of a second grocery store here locally. And we're probably gonna have more information about that in a couple of weeks. There's gonna be actual public presentations about that. And I've been involved with that core group that's looking at it. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of legal things that need to be taken care of depending on what the investment or the, what that's gonna look like, you know, to get it up and running. So that's about all. Those are the highlights that I can think of to let you know about. Next week, I'm attending the juniper alliance meeting. Scoi is gonna be very involved in all of that. And also, one more thing, the wood stove program here, Lake County, the wood stove program here in Lakeview has not had as many applications and interests as it has in the past. And so they're really ramping that up. There is money available for about another hundred units, a hundred. I just got a memo from Pam Rudd in the Klamath Falls office yesterday. And there'll be a, I don't know if the examiner's gotten the press release yet or not, but you'll, if you haven't, you'll have it probably today or tomorrow to get it in the newspaper because they're, that program. We are lagging behind in Lakeview compared to Klamath to get the word out and get some of those exchanges done. I think that might possibly have been because they were really looking at exchanging wood for other sources. And we know that, you know, diehard wood stove users, it's hard to help them move into an alternative source other than wood stove. And so now we're looking at exchanging wood stove to wood stove. So I think that will pick up a little bit.
On that subject, we have been meaning to put a little piece together for the newspaper just encouraging because we've been very fortunate so far this year. We've had some very cold weather, but we've had wind. And one good long inversion can knock us. And it's just is not to give up wood stove heat.
No.
On green or even some variations on yellow. It's just those short periods of time where we have inversion that could kick us into non-clients. And the impact of that from EPA would be devastating to our businesses. So the general folks need to realize it's not getaway. I used to tell it, I like, and I've got a wood stove in my garage. And I love wood heat. But people need to realize that it's not giving up your wood stove. It's just addressing what do you use to heat your house during those few days of inversion, because from being real nice.
So just a couple of quick comments. One, I'd love to visit with you offline about the grocery store stuff. I've been visiting with Mike Beeson and I'm not part of the group.
That would really, I would, that would be great.
Yeah, so, and when we talk about the juniper, I think we need to, well, Mary's gonna be here, Mary Dine will be here next week. You know, she's been looking for opportunities on non-federal lands.
Right.
And here, you know, we're going to have a resource that's going to be able, you know, I know there's other variations of what we can do with juniper. And some of it's feasible and some of it hasn't shown itself as being feasible, but it's definitely feasible in a biofuel plant, so.
And I was gonna give her a call and let her know about the alliance and attending this meeting and even maybe shoot her the agenda so she can take a look at it. I just haven't gotten that far yet.
Well, one of the things...
So she would know what's going on.
She called me about a minute ago on that. And I put her in touch with the Oregon Department of Forestry specifically because of their work with private landowners and knowing where they might have a large enough tract of land that they wanna treat. But we can talk about that as well.
Sure.
But the last thing is, after our presentation today, I would really appreciate it if you could take, and you can take my copy, this letter and come back to us at some point in time. Kinda give us an update, Ginger. Because the, you know, I really appreciate all the work that many groups, not just in Lake County but in the state do. But at some point in time, we've gotta be able to collaborate and coordinate what's going on instead of, you know, we have all these functions. And as I read through this, I can't help but think that you're doing work on this.
I am.
And they're doing work on it, we're doing work on it, other groups are doing work on it. So if you wouldn't mind, I'd appreciate it if you would take a copy of this.
I'd be, yeah, I would be happy to do that. You know, my favorite new phrase is, there are many moving parts. There are many moving parts to all of this. I have concerns about communication regarding all of that for all of the moving parts and how, how do we, how do we make those connections? And who is the leadership? Who is responsible, who is the leadership? And right now, it feels like this.
How do you?
And I mean, I'm not telling you how I was out of school when I say that. So, yeah, I'd be happy to give you some, some of my insights. I mean, I don't know, you know, exactly, but I, you know, I haven't spoken too much about it because a lot of it is sensitive. So I would be happy to give you an update about where I've been.
Yeah, thank you.
Couple of things I thought of, Ginger. And I followed up a little bit on this, but with the gold mine...
But with the gold mine work with them up on Porch Mountain, and I'm sure you probably have been in contact with them.
Yes.
They should be here in the next month or two ready to do an update. But I want to be sure and stay as close with them as we can.
You know, and I have been, I've talked with John, and I'm sorry for getting his last name right now, the geologist, who's very approachable, wonderful guy. They're, they have, they're not able to talk a lot about, he's hoping that in a month. He's got the okay, they've got a lot of things that are in process that security laws and all sorts of things are preventing, prevent them from discussing and disclosing what is happening. But he's, he's really, as soon as, it may be a month, it may be a little bit longer. I know that. I, when we, when they have the, the public waiting for the mining issues with sage grass, et cetera, out at the interagency office, I had a conversation with him then, and then the holidays happened. So I haven't heard from him since, but yeah, you're right.
At the same time, we might have.
Yeah, it's probably.
At the same time, that tells in to the other part of the sage grass thing and the economic impact that can have on the mining side of it. I think that we need to, economic development needs to stay connected with that side of it as much as we can do. So those are the two things that sort of came to mind.
Yeah, thanks.
Just back on the Juniper thing. That's a sustainable Northwest initiative and been engaged with them for a couple of years. But the state legislator last year passed some funding opportunities to try to promote the utilization, commercial utilization of Juniper. And that will be a topic at this session, I suppose, I believe. We've worked with our N R C S, National Resource Conservation Service of U S D A out here. They do a lot of juniper management on private lands, which typically been to cut it down, burn it. It's a beautiful wood, not as stem as useful though. But if we can get a group here to utilize what the N R C S is doing to make a, make a small, you know, mom and pop business or something, it'll go to a long ways to utilize and help juniper in addition to Red Rock. On broadband, this conference came about a couple of months ago. Well, they had a conference, U S D A had a conference in Washington. And our contact with U S D A, Jill Reeves, talked to us because we know, she knows that Lake County is engaged in broadband. And we persuaded U S D A D C office to hold a conference in Oregon. So this, we're just looking at the 11th and 12th. And then that popped us on the 2nd and 3rd, so that's a year out. Yesterday on broadband, talking with L S Network, they are looking at another mine into Houters. And I've been trying to judge how can we make it loop back so we have, we're done. It's down road. But back to this conference, the Congress has been very positive in putting money out to rural areas through some of the larger providers like Century Land. And a lot of that's coming through F C C, Better Communication Commission, as opposed to U S D A. But the emphasis of this conference is to fill that little void between the big providers and the small providers and get it down into the smaller communities. So that's the part that again, it's just their confidence.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Nope.
I just, I'll be attending the, Pat Moss, our work reformer, and I will be attending the Paisley City Council meeting tonight. Just stopping in, giving our yearly update, letting them know that we're still here and we're still here and we work for them. We've done a lot of work for the City of Paisley over the last year. We continue to build wood for the City of Paisley, a resource for them. So I, we went last year, Commissioner Shown was attending this with us. And we're going to make our appearance tonight as well. Welcome to attend if you'd like.
Hopefully I don't forget.
What's that?
Hopefully I don't forget.
I've got a number program.
There you go.
And where you live?
Yes, that's true.
So speaking of economy, currently we are, I think I have four actual officer vacancies. Soon to be nine. And we put out recruited here last month. We interviewed seven people, selected five, one is declined. So four conditional offers, we have a new process. We're going to back on investigation, takes up to 30 days. Then another couple of weeks for medical and if that, that give two weeks. So usually gives us about two months from the time we interview until we can get them started. And by then I'm down three or four officers again. So just to let you know, we're going to be at the expo in February. We plan on being at the job fair at the high school, even though we can't hire anybody until they're 21. A lot of kids graduating that, who call us that they want to come back. There's an avenue of them having a good, stable job with good benefits out of the prison. So we're, it's challenging right now. We're actually going to send another recruitment out to all the newspapers and open it back up here in a couple of weeks. Because all, we're looking at, hopefully the four that we get conditional officer offers, two will be picked up. And so there'll be five more will be looking to fill, positions to fill. So it's a challenge with the economy the way it is. I'm surprised that we are, you know, busted at the seams of people. I realize that the environment which they're working in is probably unique and not something everybody wants to work in. But we do have positions and they're good paying positions with excellent benefits. So just like you guys, we're going to start getting after with some more recruiting efforts. We'll have a couple, after the expo, we're planning on having an open house a couple of weeks after that. How people come out and tour and work with K C C because they have to take a test, a pre-employment test now to be an officer. Just like Jake's staff have to and Sheriff and the police.
Curiosity, it takes almost two months, what gets speeded up that process? Because the way I look at it is that costs you sometimes overtime to cover those shifts because of you're that old. Is it just the bureaucracy or what? I understand the two weeks notification once they're offered.
Right.
But what, a month and a half to get them through the process of being cleared to be employed? Is there any way to speed that up or is it just the bureaucracy?
It just changed. So the, first of all, the test is administered, provided through national testing, N T M, I can't remember what stands for now. But K C C has been approved to proctor that. We can't have people take the test here locally at the K C C campus. So that's put another obstacle that came from E P S S T, Department of Public Safety Standards and Training, that we have, all law enforcement agencies have to have their potential employees take that test. Our background investigations, they used to, used to apply. And then you would, you may wouldn't go on a list to be interviewed until the background investigation was completed. They've expanded, our background investigations are more like state police's background investigations now. An investigator, a lot of times will come to Lakeview, go talk to neighbors, people aware of where those potential employees are living. And so that's why it takes up to 30 days now. They're hoping it's streaming, makes it more efficient on the other end as opposed to interviewing, applying, and finding out that they're not qualified. So I, it's a challenge for us to get positions filled.
Absolutely.
Financial challenge. And we have five staff that are transferring to different institutions right now, making up nine or five of those nine vacancies. We're going to have a couple promote one, change positions within the facility. So we've probably, I don't know, over 50% of our officers have turned over since I've been here in three years for as many reasons as you can think of. So we have 50 officer positions currently that we're trying to keep filled. But you're correct, Brad, that it causes us overtime to fill those shifts when we have those vacancies.
Turnover is expensive.
It is. And we said, after we get hired, they have to go to sale to be trained. I think right now it's a total of six weeks. They go up for three, come back, work four, and go up for a week and a half or two weeks. So it's a huge investment in training.
Wait, we, similar with our jail staff and our officer services.
There's no shortcut.
Training.
There's no shortcut for that, there can't be.
No. So, you know, just thought I'd share that with you. We're going to continue to keep those positions filled. I know it has, we're glad it has a positive effect on our community, on our officers.
Prison has been an asset because you're here, you're part of our community. And that's goes to all the others that have come from outside Lakeview, as well as those who work at, who are natives over here. Recruiting for somebody to come to a small rural community this far out is tough, I realize. Is how much emphasis do we put on the immunity values of this county to kind of sway them?
Really, the department doesn't do anything. We, Sergeant Gage and I are working together on recruiting. He's planning on going to Southern Oregon University over in Ashland.
Ashland.
And going to their job fair also. We're going to try and broaden, we're looking to put an add in Alters paper, an Alters solid paper.
Yes.
Put an add in the Alters paper to see if we can broaden our recruiting efforts. But just like what Ginger talked about, another grocery store, you know, lots of times, like when I go for Pacific Power in Lakeview, the men love Lakeview. And then their wives and family come for a visit and they say, yeah, let us know when you're moving home. And there is no shopping, there is no amenities from what they're used to in a more urban area. You know, for me, I think Lakeview has way more draw and value than a, than an urban area for my lifestyle. But you got to find those usual people that like that.
Exactly. And it goes to where you, you mentioned Ashland and Bogart. Previous school service antenna. Because we was talking about recruiting the teachers. And I said, where do you go? He said, go to Portland for a convention. And I said, have you thought about Poton Idaho program, Montana, program, Nevada? Because those real folks has a value that is similar to ours. So I encourage spending it out and don't let the state line boundary restrict you. There's nothing else to say?
As we talked a little bit earlier on my end, working on the Wolf Declaration Committee. Once we get to the Friday, then we'll start our first meeting, I'll call first meeting with that group. One of our first tasks will be to appoint two people from the business community, which is the committee that is responsible for that. We will be looking at the grant side of it and looking at the compensation forms and all that. So that will be something I'm working on right away. Then continuing to, to work on transportation things. On Friday, I have a meeting in July with an executive act on the Area Committee on Transportation this Friday. One thing that I acknowledge after thinking about it, talking to Commissioner Shown too, is our full act on Friday, we'll be discussing this to bring to the full act is to basically put out the guidelines of ODOT, the process. When do we use the area manager? When do we use the district manager or the region manager? And what, what the function of ODOT is, is we are the governing board for the Area Committee of Transportation. Myself, a lot of times, I just pull and push the area manager. And he says, well, you know, you should get hold the district manager, that's his. So we've had a turnover of the board and the private county has a new commissioner on and everything. So working on that to be able to get that presentation to the full act so that we all understand that. I've been doing it for many years and I'm not even following exactly the right process at times. So that's pretty important. On Friday, we'll also be discussing some of the connect for applications for connect Oregon dollars. We won't be doing any discussion or any decisions or anything. But we'll be starting prepared for all the government before the full act later on. The presentations haven't been made to the mode yet, but they will be, I think, in February. So working on that is, we all know Senator Merle will be here tomorrow. So our meeting will be started on one tomorrow instead of our normal meeting time. Get a little bit of time to visit with him tomorrow. Trying to think. I think that's, working on any other things. Right now, some of them I do have one item tomorrow under executive session that'll be coming forward. Just to let you guys know, I'm leaving council to be on the phone tomorrow instead of here in person. Let's run it through now.
Yes, I'll try and sit through this. This, our director of community corrections mentioned I'm going to try and attend the meeting in Paisley at 9:07 in support of our work that's going on through, through the community corrections group. Thursday evening, I've got a meeting in Falls, the Eastside, or East Cascades Workforce Investment Board. We'll be having its meeting there at K C C, will be starting at 5:30. Next, I alluded to this earlier, next week, on the 13th, Gene Stephens from FedEx, kind of a communication publication individual with their company out of Atlanta is going to be here in town. And it will involve the Collins Company as well as Red Rock. Mary's going to be here. Jeff sent me an email this morning and said he's got other commitments. He's actually, I don't know if he's still going to be in Boston or not, but that's where he's headed today. He's going to call this afternoon. And then a follow-up to some of the earlier discussion is the conference call with Senator Wyden's D C office, Wes Luke, who's heavily involved with natural resource management back there with Sarah Biddleman. There will be three or four folks on that conference call. So we'll be trying to see where, what we can do to make this happen for, for biomass out here in the West, whether it's by a special designation pilot test aerial or whatever it's going to take. But it's, it's going to be one of the great opportunities here to start to treat these landscapes that either go up and smoke through wildfire or up and smoke through prescribed burning or mild burning. So that's what's on tap for me in the next two weeks.
As you know, I've been working with Butch and folks at Summer Lake trying to reduce the speed. That's been, the speed through Summer Lake is a hazard, especially right there at the store, but you know, it becomes southbound traffic. I've already mentioned that the ODOT is not in a position to reduce the speed. They're accumulating 50 miles, I think 31, about 60 by, but still it's a hazard. So the ODOT have done a little bit of work to try to psychologically reduce this motor speed. What we're still working on is putting up some signs that says entering the community, you know, to psychologically.
Great idea.
And it's been kind of dragging on a little bit because the key player tends to go south, migrate south in winter time. They come back in touch with us. So we're going to try to branden the by the sign and then donate local match. Ginger is working with me on that, on the grand aspect.
Were you able, Ken, were you able to talk to Mr. Hammonds about us making the sign for him?
I did. And I've put it out to the folks up there, one, one type of sign, one of, I'm thinking something similar to what Silver Lake, Christmas Valley, Fort Rock, they did match, no, middle sign. But what they want is just like a four foot, eight foot, green back sign. That's it, that's what Summer Lake would look like, broken underneath. And this guy that goes south every year, he has a contractor, assigned person in Ben that is going to give him a break. So I need to get back to them.
You've worked with ODOT, so whatever, if you're having a private sign, right, that means there's standards.
Sent an email out this past weekend to Butch and the same person, calling out, just, they did this to me, this to me, that.
Yeah, some of it's just so frustrating to figure out.
Other things that'll be on this, sent a bill 32 on the pipeline. We got a fourth compensation. Just sent bill 32, it's a workforce established by the legislature to work with P U C, Public Utility Commission. How can? How can rules or whatever be flexed so that we can get natural gas out beyond just the main corridors like, like we have natural gas four miles south of Southern A. But many communities across rural Oregon have a pipeline within a short distance, but they can't access it because of cost. So this group is working on that. We got an introductory meeting with PUC a week or so ago and hoping to get one of us on the committee. But there's another county commissioner out of Crackenus County that wants to be on it. In discussion with the group from, from PUC, innovative county ten, just reset at the table, but the second road has just enough input. So I, and they try to keep it real small, the group. So to have two county commissioners on it, but it's kind of blocking that a little bit. So I defer to the Crackenus, along with Sam, at the next seat right behind her. And they're trying to get a person from the city to be more collaborative, less modern.
Which position on the platform, platform duty for the Department of Transportation?
And my emphasis to the PUC and to AOC, Mark Mashburn, has kind of coordinated us to get a person out of the west side of the Cascade. The emphasis was to have a second person, maybe from the city. The PUC and Mark asked me, does nobody in the city council, elected official, I said, I got Ray Sims, but I have two of us from Lit County. We better get somebody out of, for the city, out of another region of Eastern Oregon. So we're still working on that. I brought up the subject of extending the payback period. PUC can't get this on.
PUC, yeah?
Yeah. It's not a dead issue.
That, that's, for me, that's the main issue.
Yes. That's, that's, that's not a dead issue.
And, and yes, and I appreciate the work on that. You already talked a little bit about that. Any one of us can be at that meeting too. So be sure that we all know when those meetings are.
Yeah. I hope to be in present at each one because you got more force going there. But there'll be times upon him, and I encourage both of you to be present.
Yep, yep.
Firstly, they usually make the meetings in Eugene or Seattle.
Yeah, and I'm really sort of disappointed that they didn't use a rural commissioner because of, basically the reason why, hey, they can't be paid back to the PUCs is because of population base. So we have Crackenus County representing, which has a huge population base compared to most Eastern Oregon counties. And our challenge is, is for that payback period to get that natural gas into.
Well, we all know Martha, and I think it'd be really important to continue to educate her, she's a smart lady, to honor her.
Our, our challenge is compared to.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that Crackenus County has some rural areas they don't.
Well, what they have is all these communities or cities in a cluster around Portland. And they got natural gas in most places, but this one community, probably ten thousand residents, and only a few yards from the pipeline. It's more economical to get them hooked up. That is for our community here of twenty five hundred, four miles. So that pipeline payback period will scale in the future.
Yep, yep.
And I'll be trying to recruit of, of Ben's and others to, to weigh on.
And stay, stay on Senator Woodson.
And good.
And he, and he's pretty knowledgeable on some things that's happening across the state on natural gas.
And hopefully, I'm hoping that he would be a state representative and a state senator on this committee, those two, as the other week, and not be identified. But I'm hoping he'll be, I'll be present for that. This SP, Senate Bill one ninety two, the ATV slash highway use on that work committee, and they have to meet in Salem also for some reason, the camera. Went to Woodsmoke, worked with the other day and Ben, remember had, remember had a real nasty snow. And DEQ folks, well, we hadn't had it in Eugene because we're not accustomed to this snow. And I said, it's on one way to get accustomed to it. But the ATV is coming up this Thursday, and again, it's in Salem. And this ATV highway is, state legislature again looked at a work group to come up with a proposal back to the Senate on freedom some highway here in Lakeview to get across on the same street across three ninety five is prohibited because it's at an intersection or whatever.
Yeah.
But also we're looking at, if you have a county road come in, like we do have County York, that's supplement ATV on county roads, and you've got a quarter mile or one mile or two miles to gain another county road to go to. That's a big emphasis. Ucal is way ahead of us on that, on the game, and we used to do it as a template to run The other things we're working on, I've mentioned in previous, is these lawsuits on the Blue Drive and the Suckers finally connected with the attorney for the Ina Beaners on the Blue Drive, and he's gonna read the Ina Beaner on the sucker also. Give some examples of Anisius breeds. If we go that way, I'm gonna think we should, and also to incorporate the county county commissioners. Two counties on it, on a letter carries a lot more weight to a judge than one. But I'm trying to focus, give examples of Anisius breed, Anisius breed is a friend of the court, is a third party, interest in, and so forth. And I'm trying to focus on the subject of social economic value of our ranching community. If that, if the lawsuits go south on us, do we have influence to judge on this decision? Why you came in, I haven't gotten back on them, but still I could have time to craft a Montac County letter to Secretary of Interior on that before that gets too far down. The same on the gravity, gravity, and we're still working on that.
The one, one thing that I, I shouldn't have forgot, but we're right in time frame to get our letter in on the sound record of decision on this, the mining law. I have my notes, individual notes, as we all know, I'm not a skilled letter writer. I don't want, I know that John and Debbie, Paul Ridge was in, they apparently haven't got back hold or got hold of you. But we need to strategize on what we want in that letter, and we need to get that together. And so.
When, when is that?
I think, um, I believe it's January.
Twenty fifth?
I think it's fifteenth.
Fifteenth, two weeks.
Back. Yeah. Ten days.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to focus on that, but I would assume you know some things aside, if they did not ask.
Well, I think one of our big differences is, is all the work that was done with Sage Pond, which done with Oregon Park and Fish Wildlife, was done with Oregon Miami D.C.L.D. or what, I can't even remember what that came in.
LCP.
Everything within that is to allow mitigation for development. And through this record of decision, which is a twenty year decision that's made by one person, there is no avenues to mitigate for a small footprint for any new development of any mine.
Exactly.
And, and I'm really, really afraid of this whole thing. And, you know, they say it's, it's only twenty years. Well, the RMP, the Resource Manager Plan, was fifteen years ago. And we're fighting it today of the extreme that they used at that time. And now they're starting to take our cattle away from us, our grazing away from us, and start to shut down our roads and our lands out there. And so I look at this in the same fashion. I'm prepared for tomorrow to have quite a conversation with Senator Merly, hopefully, one on one, a one on one, like the closest I may have with him, with some, one point nine million acres in Oregon is huge, huge. And if you change that into square miles, it's bigger than twenty four counties in Oregon. Well, it's equal to about four eastern states. Well, there's eastern, eastern, this is just Oregon, Hocking County. It's, it's huge. We got, I sent out, you guys see my, I sent out and asked for people to come, state representatives, state senators, US congressmen, and US senators for their staff to be here. I got new replies. I got one from, from Ben, he was tied up, he was at the business Oregon, as a speaker, and one from Wallen. I had no response. They never came to the meeting at the BLM, and they never came to the meeting that we tried to meet there. And we're talking that, that one point nine million acres is six and a half times bigger than Mokomo County. And I'm just disclosing a lot of research, and, and we're getting no representation of what this can do to us.
I think that it's ironic, and, and I don't agree, and don't need to editorialize on the Harney County situation that's currently going on, but it's at the heart, the general premise is just exactly what you're talking about. And hopefully, we'll be giving some people's attention, but doing it in a positive way. But people are tired of our public lands getting attacked, tied up.
Well, and that's a general role of footprint, relatively small. So when you lock up one point nine million acres in, in Oregon, it's just, doesn't make full of sense without no way to mitigate or help out that.
And the mitigation part is just right on the money. That's where the focus needs to be, is there's got to be a way on that large land base to have mitigation for these very small, recoverable parts of that land.
Yeah, it's miniscule. Yeah, and, and this is BLM, and it's all based on one species on, on the sage grass and some forest plant too. But we're, we're sitting here today with Forks Mountain on the verge of being developed in the next five years. It definitely takes one species to shut that down too. And, and as we've seen, your guys' experience, my experience here, is this is the start of the end. I hate to say that, but it's, it's the start of the end, to take those opportunities for economic development away from us. I also think in the letter, we need to ask for an economic analysis of the impact to Oregon and to Lake County. And that needs to be done before anything's, if I can. Just right here in Lake County, the best example is, is the Pearl Mine. But the railroad is saved, it's based around the, the, of the timber industry. We had no idea, the people at the time, commissioners and the county mayor had no idea we were gonna have a mineral here, and how it will, what it is. Now, our railroad is dependent on pearl miners to continue to operate because we're down to one sawmill instead of five. We don't know about minerals or, yet to be discovered out there. And if they lock it down, then we cannot develop any of those. That is just not appropriate. We understand core habit had, if it's a middle core habit had, that's sort of, I don't know, we're sacred, it's not gonna be the help. But the Lohdinsky areas and everything, they're, fire saved on, but the ODFW, that's, is that a rule?
The mitigation part is ODFW, the land use part is LCPC.
Yeah, but they both allow for mitigation.
We work.
And you work hard, you work hard, you work hard to get that in there. And if they cannot take into consideration our own policies, our own state's rules, we need, I thought, we need to point out, so I guess, but I'm asking, this is how we want to get five put together, we ought to have a put this letter.
Well, I need time to focus on it. I'll set aside the Anisius breed and NRA and light, because it's down the road a bit, we don't have a deadline of January fifty. Give me the bullet points.
Okay.
Because you do the coming up bullets. I'm good to just put it in language.
All right. Good stuff. Thank you for, for doing that.
Also, you may be aware that Fairground Maintenance Person had a slippery accident on the ice, extremely nasty, terrible break, he's out of commission for unhealed trauma time, not life due to, doctor said, no work. It's a very nasty break. And also our program manager, she noticed yesterday that she has, her husband has a job in Tannan, so she'll be far, so we're gonna start the process of soliciting a new manager.
You maybe have a special board meeting for Fair Board, probably, do you have one right away, probably?
Well, no, our next Fair Board meeting is a week from today, and I've worked with Jay, go ahead. Thing is getting into the newspaper.
Yep.
Jim, gotta ask you, did a little spur get in for tomorrow?
Um, I don't think so, no.
Okay, well, we're gonna work through, we're hoping.
We might be able to though.
Yeah, so we've got, got to have a, a time comparison to, to the public. And then we have to do all the screening, that interviews and everything. So we might miss a window of having a transition of a new manager with the old manager because a lot's going on out there. But if we miss that window, I'll grab over myself and Shanghai, we can come back for the transition.
Well, the, the Fair Board has an opportunity to look at, to call it at this point. There's challenges that come with it too, that you have something you have to.
The other thing on, on what's going on in Burns, on the John O'Keefe interview, it was with Fox Business, and I was able to capture that last night.
Oh, was it? I didn't see it.
It was good. It's on Facebook.
It's on Facebook.
If you look under Jane's page on Facebook, she's got it posted there.
Yeah.
Did he need a good job?
He did a good job. He was interviewed by Lou Dobbs, and Lou did a pretty good job, I believe.
Yes.
He did. But he tried to mix in Bureau Land Management as part of the black hat, and John can't, don't know.
It was, John did good.
And the biggest emphasis came out of that was, people at Burns did not invite, more radical group, they, they wanted to go through an after process, you know, negotiation and expression, whatever, to resolve issues, have to, however, I heard this morning that Restor Guard, what we used to call, when I was in over at the Restor Rag, pardon, I mean, it's what it was called, had a kind of a negative tone curve, a bunch of all these militants and stuff, and Eastern Oregon rappers and things like that. So hopefully, John's can be a counter to that presentation from Eugene. So give me the bullets on the mineral stuff.
Yep, I, I have some, some things written down, I have quite a bit written down, I'll get that together.
I have a bunch too, that I can share with you.
Yeah, one of the thing with the mineral withdrawal is it goes, the US Fish and Wildlife Service and the Interior Department utilizes the Oregon Fish and Wildlife Habitat mapping.
Yes, that's huge.
Different interpretations on that, but that's my gig, is that we use the habitat identified by the local management, state. There's many flaws in that habitat because there's always a kind of computer through four mile radius, and it loops over Pearl Rock Mine, where the Pearl Rock Mine is not habitat. So my concern with that mineral thing is, once it comes down, it's twenty years, but it's all much automatic after that. Is that how do we give scientific description back to the agents, to the Interior Department of what should not be withdrawn?
I agree with that, but also if they're going to use that map as good science, because the biologists are the ones that set this up, then they also ought to use that good science for the mitigation, because the people that created that map believe in mitigation. So we have to point that out. we have to point that, articulate that in the right light, that if they're going to use that good science and use their maps, they have to acknowledge that the good science also will allow mitigation, and they should do no different than, oh, the science.
Yeah. You just got along with Ian, I mean, I was, my memory is due to you for the Forest Service Wildlife, so we did, maybe, things, mentalists being one of them, on the, on the most potteries, we had petroleum, and I worked with, you know, to mitigate less than the impact, substitute to this, that the blanket withdrawal disallows that, and it's a standard process to look at what is practically on the ground, but over knowledge.
Well, I, I haven't other than through media seen, but some of the reclamation on some large mines, especially back in Kentucky and everything, the reclamation of those is better wildlife habitat than there was before the mines were there, and they're, they're almost more pristine, which isn't the right word used, because people think pristine is natural, but they're, they're, the habitat is better, the whole wildlife, the water's cleaner, many other things that, that because of industry is vested in reclaiming it to a whole new level, and so that's just stipulation in the contract to retire it, yes, so we could actually, and that's what's a better habitat, possibly for multiple species, not just one, I hate for anything to be managed for multiple species, but on the mitigation and the restoration, we have to keep in mind of, because between eastern United States and the climate kind of productivity is no degree different than a reclamation, because there is, there is pretty happy, but still, as far as the cards are again.
Anything else? Anything else, um, you don't see? Then, lights, different.
That's ten, what?
Ten fifty-four, then.
Catch.
Resess?
No, recess.
Oh, it's recess until my clock, thank you.